The time is one forty P M on May thirty first, twenty 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 four. I'm calling to order the Boylston Regional School Committee Student Success and Technology Subcommittee. Present is myself, Jessica Degley Alberti and Lisa Marr. And we are doing a voice recording due to W B A C not being able to be here.
Nobody could be here?
No, it's a busy day. Um, so the first on our business items is just to review the master plan from the town of Boylston. Megan Grill was originally the representative to that committee. And since she took over as chair, she asked me to take over it, that position. And so our next upcoming meeting is June fifth, which I'll be able to only go to a small portion because of my daughter's school concert. But they had asked at the last meeting to give the top five to seven items from the master plan. And so it's a rather dense and long thing, which if you'd like, I can give it to you and you can peruse at your pleasure. But it is Boylston, not Berlins. But it, you know, since two of the three schools are in Boylston, there's some relevant things. There was kind of a trend, I know you had gone to the talk about the green. Green something, green energy.
Oh, yeah, clean energy.
Clean energy.
Basically solar.
Solar, okay. And so there were some line items here that I had highlighted. And so I just wanted to see your thoughts on what you thought priorities were for the district. Comes for from a Berlin perspective and maybe more of a Tohonto perspective. There were a couple of different ones, I didn't highlight this one, there's a couple of different ones that mentioned sidewalks. And currently on Sewell Street where the elementary school is, and then also Tohonto, there are not sufficient sidewalks. And I believe Berlin Memorial, there's a little bit of sidewalk, but then I think it ends before it gets to the school, correct? Like when it gets to the courts?
Yeah, I think, I think that's where it ends, right? I'd have to go look and remind myself.
But I think it's not quite sufficient for walking to school, which at B E S, it's non-existent, so. So that was kind of officially highlighted anything on that first page. And then getting down to point C two. Says ensure that bike lanes sidewalks are included on any route one forty construction. So one forty leads up to the elementary school. Yeah. And so, but I think maybe a lower, lower priority, but still would be nice if, if and when one forty was redone, there would be sidewalks installed for students to walk to school.
Absolutely. Do you think that parents would let them these days?
I know, well, I mean, back in the day, you could ride your bike when you were in sixth grade. So I think that's rule does still exist for fifth graders. But I think anyone that walks the schools through the woods from the development behind the school, so I don't know. At Berlin Memorial, does anyone walk?
Not that I know of.
Probably not, there's probably not enough houses close enough.
There might be like a couple like that are adjacent, but yeah.
Single digits probably, of how many.
I mean, but if we're, I mean, just in an overall sense, it seems like, like the state and the country even is really interested in putting in bike lanes and sidewalks. And I heard, and we'd have to talk to somebody else in town about this in Berlin, but I heard that there is some kind of a grant that we might have received to do more sidewalks.
Okay.
But I think that it's specifically for like around that central area, yeah, right? But I mean, if possible, link it into the school.
Yeah, because the Berlin Memorial is not that far away from the center of town.
No.
Hypothetically, right?
It's not.
Because that's where the center of town is, yeah, very small, right? There's the church and then the center store and.
Yeah, yep.
And then, sorry, taking notes too. And then Objective D one, this is again along one forty and north and Sewell Street. And the reason why I highlighted that is because with the new development, and even before the new development, coming in and out of Sewell Street for car drop off and pickup is not a great situation. And now you have that new house, housing development makes use right on the corner of Sewell, South Sewell Street. I guess the state looked at it and didn't deem it needed any lights or anything. But I know like once they're opening it, they're going to be taking a closer look at that. So it's just in terms of safety of people coming in and out of the road for school.
Yeah, I mean, if they don't want to put another light, maybe they could do like some kind of a flashing light or something like caution, you know?
Yeah, it's hard because it's, the two streets don't line up. So South Sewell comes out here, the development's here, one forty's here, and then North Sewell's here. And then there's the A T M and the pizza place right across from South Sewell. And so now, and now you're going to have another entrance slightly offset from North Sewell for the new housing development and the mixed use. So it's just gonna add a lot of congestion to the situation.
Okay.
So, we'll see. And so then that kind of brings us down to, I guess I shouldn't write numbers here, D one. And then that brings us to G two, becoming a safe routes to school partner and developing safe routes to school, so.
And this is for specifically walking to school or?
Or biking, I think. I'm not familiar with that initiative, but I believe it's both. So again, it would be the sidewalks. There are, I know for at least further down Sewell, South Sewell, there's a lot of different neighborhoods and there's no sidewalks that go and it's a pretty windy road. But I mean, it's definitely walkable for many families if there were sidewalks there, so.
And are we thinking about this for Tohonto also?
Well. Questionable, you know, there's not many neighborhoods nearby that would do it.
Right.
I know the trails are used north of the school and there's no sidewalks to that trail. And then I'm not sure about the, if the cross country uses the, the southern trails. They probably just go through the parking lot, so they wouldn't need, you know, safe passage there. But that, yeah, that is another thought. Yeah, because I want to keep all schools in mind.
Yeah, I mean, just asking.
And Berlin too, yeah.
I mean, it seems like the, the elementary would be the priority, but if possible, eventually doing something for Tohonto.
Yeah, no, I know we're not allowed to use like the D C R parking lot, but I know they use that for the, the cross country needs a lot, so. It would be helpful to have kids not doing that. And I know the baseball softball used to have people cross the street and then go up the street behind the apple orchard for running before the snow melted. So again, maybe having like even like a little crosswalk, like sidewalks and crosswalk to that road. Because that was always exciting crossing the street and doing that, the mailbox run as it was called.
You have to run really fast to outrun the cars.
Yeah, survival of the fittest. And then down to, I guess this is under goal three. So I guess those were under goal two. B one, install no idling signs where vehicles frequently idle, such as schools, convenience stations, municipal facilities. I know sometimes there's cars for parent pickup, starting at like two o'clock for a three o'clock pickup. So in terms of healthy environment for our children in our communities, I think that would be big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's really important. I mean, it's so wasteful.
Yeah, yeah.
So wasteful. And then all those cars idling in the same area, I mean.
Not good for asthma, it's not good, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think we might have that at B M S already.
Do you? I'd, I'd have to go look, but I know like where maybe there for drop up used to be, but now I think it's because during COVID, they looped around the school. And now for traffic reasons, they loop it around the school, so cars aren't hanging out on Sewell Street. So maybe they just need to be relocated to that or information.
Yeah.
Don't idle for an hour.
Yeah, I mean, we knew, when my kids were in school, we knew that we weren't allowed to idle on that, yes, you know, great.
Yeah, I feel like it's not, yeah, but I feel like the, the communication's not there for sure. Like I don't remember seeing something that says don't idle.
So signs, so, so this is, these are from the town?
This is Boylston Town Master Plan. And, and so this was created a year or two ago or three. And so now this is like the implementation committee that I'm on. And so there's representatives from different parts of the town. And so Megan was, and now I will be from the school for the town, so. And so, yeah, so we're prepared to come back with five to seven items that were the most important. So I figured I highlighted ones that seemed mildly relevant and then we can always whittle them down to what, what.
And she wanted three to five, you said?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, because there's a bunch, but. And then pursue green communities designation. And I didn't know what that included, but you know, kind of like solar or other, you know, I know we have the new HVAC at B E S. That's a little bit more cost effective or environmentally friendly than the oil burner that we have, so. And then B M S has the pellets that supplement the oil too, I think.
Okay.
So I would just, you know, find out what that includes and maybe there's some grants hanging out there.
Yeah, it sounds like there are a lot of grants we could take advantage of.
Right, it was having the person finding it.
Thermal sounds.
Yep.
Amazing. Yeah, and, and the webinar that I went on for, for Senator Markey's Green Energy for Schools, there are people in Massachusetts school districts who have already done this or started the process and they're thrilled and they're happy to meet with anybody, you know, who's considering it, so. Yeah, so we can tap into that.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, not only environmentally smart idea and long term, but also fiscally too.
Yeah, yeah, I think I read somewhere that it saves like eighty percent in your expenses.
Because the ground is what fifty degrees and so you have very little effort to get above or, you know.
Right, well, that and also just solo, like when you go green, you can save like a tremendous amount of money every single year. I'm like, that would be amazing, right?
Yeah, and that would add up.
However, yeah, so there, there are, in just like very briefly, there are other options, I think, where the school doesn't own the equipment and.
Oh, they're leasing.
Yeah, like it goes, but then I think you only save like fifteen percent. It's still something, but, and it might be cheaper, more doable to do it that way.
Lower startup cost.
But we'll see, yeah.
And then we're breaking into goal five at this point. And that's again, seeing the zoning sidewalks, bike paths. So I didn't know, that's probably not as relevant. Oh, but again, it's the sidewalks. That's more of the zoning.
Yeah, because to require that.
Require, yeah.
It's great, the bike parking too.
Yeah. And then maintenance of the sidewalks. I know some of the sidewalks are very sad, that do exist. I think around this, Boylston Elementary, they're, they're decent. Trying to think over in Berlin, I think they're okay as well, because they're mostly cement sidewalks. And I think A D A, so that's probably a little less of a priority around the schools. There's a recording of voice, yeah. And then I guess it's under population. And housing. Goal one. And then A one. Schedule an annual meeting forum on housing open to the public. And the reason why I did this is because our concern is room in the schools, right? And so we would want to be included in that discussion because if you're going to do like you did on Sewell Street, there could be potentially, you know, which is up to three bedrooms. There could be potentially a lot of kids coming in, which would be a concern. So I think it would be good for, for a representative to be included in that.
Do you know how many new kids came from the?
We don't know yet.
Not yet, okay.
Yeah, it opens June first, so we'll probably know by the end of the summer. Mister John Kemp was, the B M S was saying out of the development over kind of towards the mall, there's only like maybe nine, ten kids.
Oh, really?
Which is surprising for the size of it, so. If we will be so lucky. It really is, it's amazing the size, and so the one on Sewell Street's not that big, but um, still I think it's a hundred, somewhere around a hundred units, so. Could be.
Could be three hundred kids.
Yes, let's all just pray. That they choose to be in ninth, tenth, and eleventh and twelfth grade. And then, I think it was under, and so then, so that's goal four. And B two. So this is develop an action plan to help seniors and families who are getting priced out of local housing and rental markets sustain the community. Explore additional methods to help those with fixed or lower incomes afford increasing property tax valuations such as more volunteer opportunities in exchange for property tax waivers or ways to create smaller, more cost effective and affordable houses. The reason I did that is because the issue with our budgets is that seniors have a fixed income and they are saying that they're starting to not be able to afford to live in their, in the towns, which is not something we want. And so I think if, if there's ways even maybe to have more volunteer opportunities within the school that could be exchanged for property tax waivers.
Oh, that's a cool idea.
Because there are currently in Boylston, you can do that, but there I think maybe the select a meeting or maybe the finance committee meeting. There was some comment that there are limited ways in which volunteers can be used in a municipal way, right? So I think of a senior volunteering, like for the voting, I think a lot of people were doing that to do that. But in schools, there's a ton of opportunities for volunteering, which is maybe less physically demanding
Right.
than anything that would be municipal or maybe less, you know, specific knowledge needed for it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, at the, at B M S, we have the readers program where volunteers come in and the kids like will go with the reader for like half an hour and the kids will read to the reader and it really helps the kids. And I actually do that, I go in once a week for that. But one, the first time I walked in, one of the teachers goes, teacher goes, you're not old.
Thanks!
But I guess normally it's for senior citizens, you know, to do that, that's what it was designed for. But also, and I know this probably isn't really relevant to our purposes here, but I do think that there should be another way where at a certain point, like seniors have been paying property taxes for how long? You know what I mean? Paying into the whole tax system and then, and now they have to like work off their tax debt? I don't know, I just think that there's something more like on a state or nationwide level that we should do.
Cap them.
Yeah, cap it somehow.
Or based on, based on income maybe, or you know, because like income taxes like that, but maybe property tax could be like that as well, you know? If this is your income, then we won't expect you to pay.
Right.
Cap it.
Well, I mean, they don't necessarily have income, right? But maybe just assets, I don't know, like financial assets.
How that would be, yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess they have social security, but it's never a lot, yeah. So something, I, I just really feel like something should be done for the seniors because, I mean, I know this said something about them, you know, maybe having smaller houses available, but they don't want to leave their houses, right?
Yeah, and I don't want to expect anyone to move either, but I, I know there, there has been comments in all these meetings for the budget that there are no senior options to downsize. So the people that do want to downsize, there aren't options to still stay within your community, so.
Well, that, yeah, so it's a good option, right?
But you don't want to force people to do that, certainly.
Yeah.
But yeah, so I just wanted to be inclusive of the entire population.
Yeah, good.
And then this was under, sorry, open space. Taking notes and talking. Goal three. So create an organizational chart, oh, so this is open space, goal three, A one. Create an organizational chart and communication plan to clarify ownership of recreational lands, costs of use, responsibility for maintenance. And so I think we now have a lease agreement between the towns for our schools, or at least for B E S, which I know had already existed for B M S. And so the town taking ownership of, of the upkeep of the buildings and the property. So I know that they mow the lawns, but I think everything else falls to the maintenance or the, or the custodians, so. But I thought those two kind of spoke, so A two as well.
That might reduce our budget a little.
Indeed, indeed. Yeah, and A two is periodically assess and evaluate recreational needs, resources, and conditions of existing fields and facilities. And so I thought that was especially for the field, like the fields at Tohonto, so. Have to type these out, obviously. And then coming down to under goal three still, C three. Recruit volunteer groups to help with the maintenance upgrade and cleanup of facilities such as Boy Scouts or, and then creating projects that can be undertaken by volunteer groups. I think a lot of the same people do volunteer for like P T Os, but they're good at, at mobilizing people. So I know before the beginning of school, there was a big concern about B E S. And some people in the garden club stepped up and made it and some, some parents are donated, business of parents donated mulch and stuff. But I think maybe trying to do a little bit formal, rather than like last week before, be like, wait a minute, this is awful looking. Trying to create a more formal process of like cleanup weekend at B E S or something to get.
That's great, yeah.
I know for the, for softball, baseball, we have cleanup weekend to clean up those fields, so they can be used. So maybe something before the beginning of school as well.
That's a wonderful idea.
Sorry, this is a long document. And, well, I started this just for my own thing because it's wetlands in town and with the B E S, there is a wetland right behind that, there used to be trail to go down that you could do, you know, wetland projects. But I don't think there's any trails now to get to there. And then there also the question of the water quality because of the development right next to it too, so. But then under goal four. Nope, five, sorry. Nope, six, sorry. And it just hooks back to the develop a landscape and maintenance plan for town property. The elementary school could use a little love.
So if this is then taken over by the town, then we wouldn't need to do the volunteers, like you said.
Hypothetically, I don't know if they have seasonal employees or not, I don't know. Because sometimes the, you go out for like a softball game behind the elementary school and there was one time the grass was like mid, mid shin. And so I, I think, you know, there's a lot of ground to cover, literally. So it might still be, but if, you know, regular maintenance should fall under them, some type of schedule. But maybe just before the beginning of the school year. It's coming to the end.
No, 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 I was just realizing, like, I could be typing this while we talk about it, so you don't have to like write it and then type it.
Maybe when you, when you're talking, I'll type and then I'll, I can, because it's just not that much longer, yeah.
You sure?
Yeah, yeah. And I can come back and actually type most of it, so. And then, so under the cultural one. Goal four. They had B two, which was how to get involved section of the town website with volunteer opportunities. And I kind of liked that in terms of also our, our website and then tying into their website. Because, you know, like the garden beds at B E S or Tohonto, there might be a specific project or B M S, and I think.
The readers, you know?
Exactly, exactly, and the fact that you guys have that program, I don't think the elementary school does, to my knowledge, but it might. But that's a great idea that we could then incorporate to B E S. So I, I kind of like that idea.
Yeah, I love that.
C two, and then boost the town's presence on social media. You know, I think to link them as well.
I think that's a great idea. We definitely need to do that, and actually, I had a thought about that for this, this subcommittee.
Situation.
Yeah, well, this situation, but also our subcommittee, like, and this is maybe something that we could talk about like at another meeting. But um, just having, well, we, we didn't really know. I think when we kind of joined this subcommittee, like, what does that even mean, right?
What's under our jurisdiction, yeah, yeah.
But it, it seems like we really do need a communications arm. So I don't know if it could be like communications and technology or something. And the communications could be the social, like the stuff for us, you know, the social media, you know, it would be on us to make sure the website is, you know, usable and, you know, even like the formatting of the handbooks or, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Well, I was saying like it takes our minutes to be approved until the next meeting, right? So unless you sit through and watch our meeting, you're not exactly sure what's happening and then the rumor mill happens, so. I was actually thinking that, again, future meeting to formally discuss this, but that, that maybe we could have like big agenda items that happen, like, you know, like a summary that we kind of all agree to pre-post the next day on our social media. Just so the rumor mill doesn't, you know.
Right.
Rule.
Yep, and then even as part of that could be, we had talked about just being in the public, you know, like at Nineteen Carter, you know, once a month or, you know, that kind of thing, so, anyway.
No, I completely agree, and then I think that's why later on, the agenda item is the, the website. Just to kind of see what do we need to add and especially within this current budget situation. You know, I, I keep mentioning I want to do the three year plan and just find that video blurb and put it up because it was such a nice presentation and it was such a beautiful vision. You know, I think that just kind of got lost in the hours and hours of meetings that we have. So it, it would be nice to, you know, I'll take the responsibility and, and find out the meeting that happened. And then Brittany for W B A C had said that she would, if we gave her the start and the stop, that she would chunk that and, and give it to us, so.
Oh, right, okay.
So I think that, you know, I think pictures are worth a thousand, thousand words, you know?
Yeah.
To see the vision.
Yeah.
Help tell the story.
I wonder if we should even potentially have like on the website, like just a budget page, you know?
So that's why I want to see how it looks, yeah, yeah, yeah. And Paul stopped me on the way in and said, let me know if anything comes up on the website that him and, or he and Nicole were going to work on the website a little bit over the summer to make it a little bit
Great.
better, so. But just real quick, so the, let's see, under goal, uh, town facilities. Yeah, A four, pursue green communities designation for energy efficiency at the municipal and the school buildings. And so that kind of, you know, goes into what you were.
And the previous. And the previous.
And the previous ones too, yeah. So they're kind of overlapped. So I, there definitely was a trend, kind of like one, you know, there was a few bullets that kind of. Spoke to the same thing, so we could maybe combine them that way. That was probably not actually us, it's more municipal technology, but it was the grants that I liked. Um, although the fiber grant has helped our our town offices, so actually that does, that does lead to us. Yeah, it's under town facilities. Goal two. Sorry, I didn't imagine this would be so long.
Thank you for doing all the prep work and looking at all this ahead of time.
And then B ten, under goal two, um. B two, B ten. Um, establishing student liaison positions on committees, um, to get the youth, you know.
Yeah.
Um, so I thought that was exciting, and I think that would be great on someone's resume too for the students, so.
And give them that insight into the inner workings of local government.
Yeah, yeah.
Love that. And those would be from the high school.
I would assume, so, yeah, yeah. And then regularly review the long-term planning guides on the school department's budget book and support the critical needs through capital planning. Um, so that is very relevant to where we are right now. And so that I think was a huge priority for us to work with the towns.
I wonder what regular review.
I know, well, probably at least monthly, but I, you know, with the subcommittee only being two people for the budget, I feel like that stretches those people really thin.
Yeah.
Which concerns me, you know, cause you know, we all are have families and work and. Volunteer, so.
But would they be potentially, would the town potentially be meeting with like Carol, for instance, or? And not necessarily the budget subcommittee?
Good question. I know, I guess it depends on how much is on Carol's plate. But I mean, I guess it would be via Carol to the committee that that then would say to them, so, so there'd be, they'd be the middleman. Which we are now. Um, yeah, that's a good question. Um, and then just another green communities one, seem to be throughout here, it's the same goal. Oh, no, goal four, sorry. Still under the town facilities and just pursue green. Green communities. Repair, uh, behind B E S specifically, the pavement is really, um, really bad down there, so that's why.
Would that count? This is, seems like it's talking about roads. Not necessarily like school facilities, so I'm just, like, I'm just wondering if you're, if you're planning to like lot, you know, cross some of these off of our list, then.
I guess. There's a priorities for our particular group, so I guess it wouldn't be roads per se, you're right, so.
Although kids are riding their bikes to school.
Indeed, indeed. Um, and then this is. Still under goal five. Or no, still under town facilities. And so objective G, the kind of the whole shabam is under here. And, um, then, okay, will do. All right. And so objective G, um. Is all to do with school facilities and service consistent with the school systems, changing needs. Um, so obviously I think that whole, all three of those objectives, um. Are a priority for us. So continue to track model and monitor enrollment trends, G one. G two, plan for increased enrollment at B E S, B M S, potentially peaking in twenty twenty seven, which. Was an interesting thing, maybe just because of the housing developments. Um, and then G three, creating a school facilities and service plan that address potential changes in class size. And student scheduling, so I know at Tohonto, the the classrooms are an issue with, but so is the teachers in terms of scheduling.
I think we should keep that on the list.
Yes, yes, the whole, yeah, one, two, and three. Oh. Under economic development.
Thank you for doing all of this. I feel like I'm just like.
Yeah, so under the economic development one and then A five. Um, consider working with school department or Boy Scouts to have youth create self-guided. Instagram tours or they combine several of the natural and business sites in the town. Um, so I thought that might actually be a very cool project for the high school to work on. Self-guided tours, so just to, um. So students at Tohonto.
Offer discounts who complete the tour? Discount, like what kind of discount?
I think like, oh, you heard about the this business from blah blah blah, this tour, then you get ten percent off if you mention the tour or something. I, that's what I imagine it to be. Um, but I think it's also like to bring more people into the the district. More business. And then I guess that was goal seven. Cause then goal eight.
Nine, right?
Uh, nine, yeah, thank you.
You would've seen it.
Um, and just goes back to the the infrastructure of the bikes for A three, for bike lanes. And then. A five, again, that's kind of the concern, um, so that's in, uh, traffic flow. That is certainly at Tohonto and B E S, um, for Sewell Street. And I don't know, in terms of people coming in to B M S. Although drive is pretty long, so it probably is not an issue. Is pulling out of there an issue, like during school hour, like?
At B, B M S.
B M S, yeah.
I don't think it's an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to flow well, but I haven't been there in a long time.
Yeah, I know.
So, but I mean, back when we were there, I mean, it was just, you know, we. Wait, you know, around the circle and drop off and pick up and.
How about the blinking light at that when you come out?
You mean, would that be a helpful thing?
No, no, the the current blinking light, so the road that I think that's Linden Street that the PlayStation now is on, where the old B M S was, and it comes to that.
Oh, the sixty-two?
Yeah. I wonder if that's like a stop-up. Like a bottleneck, that's what I'm trying to say.
I I don't notice it being a bottleneck, but currently it might be worse than usual though, because it's, South Street is blocked, yeah, so. But I guess that's a question for them, you know, if it is actually an issue. So what what were you thinking, like? Turn it into a light or like a?
Oh, well, you know, like maybe a road, like a roundabout or something, so it just helps with the flow, but I don't know if it's a bottleneck there. I don't know exactly what would happen for Sewell Street and one forty, cause it's a, you know, it's a state highway, so it's not up to the town.
Yeah.
Which makes it difficult. Um, and then one, or that's, yeah, that's one forty, it was seventy, I think it's also state. Run for Tohonto, but I know they've done pickup behind, but there's still like a lot of stop traffic for. For pickup and drop-off, so. It seems like studies need to be done to to ease that or ease the traffic flow. So, um. I don't know if you sense like, uh, you know, obviously wrote a lot of things down, but I feel like there was trends in what we were writing down, so they would fall under it.
Obviously, the green trend.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Throughout.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so that's kind of one, one major point. Um, I think the idling signs is pretty low-hanging fruit.
Yeah, I think that should definitely be on there. I mean, it's just a sign and with a lot of benefit.
Yes.
Yeah. And then maybe that's something as this, the schools could, you know, communicate through newsletters and things too.
Yes, yes, yes.
And then we should have the police hanging out, getting tickets.
Shut that car off, man. Open the windows. Put a jacket on, stay at home longer.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so you're looking for.
Trends, so, green, I feel like maintenance was also.
Yeah.
A big one, kind of the property.
Like who who maintains?
Yeah.
Schedule.
Volunteer efforts, yeah. Um, and then kind of, mm, social media presence or? I guess, right?
More town outreach, more outreach. And then whoever's doing that should be connected with whoever's doing it for the school committee, right?
Yeah, yeah. And then maybe there was a.
Schools, I should say.
There was a few different, um, like student liaison and then the student projects, so student involvement. Volunteer. There's a few under there.
Yeah, so it was on the town committees, the Instagram tours. Was that it?
And then I think different group volunteer maintenance, but.
Right.
Yeah, be more of the parents than the the students. Grants up in here with the green, the green trend.
And then of course.
That standalone, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, uh, so that's town facilities.
With the schools.
So. Yeah, and then the only thing not, I think. Add sidewalks up in here in maintenance.
And also fields, right, and and, um, what do you call it, parking lot?
Yeah, I'll go through and and plug in what I wrote here into these categories.
Okay.
Um, the only thing is. The action plans for seniors and families getting priced out. Yeah, that was the annual meeting.
Do you have any idea if these apartment buildings provide a lot of tax revenue to the town?
Not really.
Meaning they don't, or you don't know?
Um, they don't. So it's they, what they require in terms of infrastructure support or needs is more than what they're gonna bring in. So it's really the businesses that we need. And it just can't be supported on Boylston and Berlins tax base, so, yeah. So housing is not the answer to our our woes, it's it's businesses. All right, I feel like those categories.
And so, tell me again, so you're on a separate committee with Boylston?
Yes, so I'm the schools representative. On the master plan implementation committee, I believe that's the title, or that's the gist of the title.
Okay. Is it, it's not a school committee, subcommittee though, right? Is it?
No, I'm a representative from the school committee, and so that's why I wanted to bring it to the subcommittee and then. And then we'll, I'll mention this on Tuesday as well in the subcommittee reports. But yeah, that's why I just wanted to kind of go through it on the books and not just at my house.
No, this is great. It's wonderful that you're doing that. It kind of makes me want to do that with her when, if there is, do you know if there is?
I don't know. I don't know, like I know, like, yeah, I know this was a project the last, uh, a few years ago, but it was like a big effort and now trying to. Use it.
Make it happen, right, yeah, not just a document somewhere.
Exactly. I'm like, oh, there it is, and there it sits. All right, I talked a lot. Um, would we, would we like to skip down to Senator Markey's Green Energy for Schools webinar?
So it it's just super briefly, I don't have, I I don't have the slides for whatever reason. But, um, I will send Nicole the the, um, presentation, cause there's an M P four. And so if anybody wants to watch it, and the bottom line was that there are just incredible grants available right now. That will really help us to be able to afford it and then save money going, you know, down in the future.
That's awesome. Yay, save money.
Yeah, and then there are a lot of people in our, um, in the state, in the school districts who are doing this. Or have done it and are going through the process, who are just so excited and pleased with the whole thing. And they can't, like, they're just like, their excitement, like, they can't even sit still, they're so excited, and they want to help anybody else who wants to do it, so. You know, we'll have their names from here and we'll be able to, um, connect with them if we decide to. Start looking into that more seriously.
What, um, what was the date of, or ish? What month was it in?
I can't tell you, hold on. It was, um.
April?
Okay, it was April tenth, actually, yeah. And it was called, um, unlocking clean energy opportunities for schools.
Ah, okay. And it was a webinar?
It was a webinar, yep, and there were a whole bunch of people that came to speak.
Um, maybe putting that email in?
Yeah, like I could just save it as a.
A PDF?
A PDF, yep. And then, cause all the links will be there.
Yeah.
And, um.
Nicole might know how to do that.
Yeah, and there was, there were, there was some talk, I mean, it was great, the, I think the most exciting thing was getting the solar. On on the roofs, right? But there was also some talk about electrifying the school buses. But apparently there are problems in some parts of the world that have done that, where they freeze.
Yeah, like Wisconsin, all those places I would never want to live, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think that that would be something that we would look at, that we would do, like.
Wonder if hybrid, because then then you have like the safety of the the motor, but then, you know. Braking, you're you're saving up the energy and so you're at least, and then idling.
Lot of braking and.
And there's a lot of idling too.
Right, yeah, it sounds like that would be the best option. I'm actually surprised that that wasn't mentioned, or I have never heard that until you just said it. You know, as an option.
Well, I know my husband had mentioned that police cars were trying to move over to hybrid, because all the idling they do, and it's tough on the engines. And so hybrids are perfect for that. And it's tough on the engines, and so hybrids are perfect for that, because then they can just go off their battery.
Right, they just get really quiet. I love it so much.
We have one too, and I'm very, big fan, yeah. A big fan of not sitting there getting charged, you know, having to plug it in at night too.
Right, exactly. And, and have to like, go a couple states away and then plug it in like, once or twice on the way, I'm like, what?
Not sustainable.
Not for this kind of lifestyle. Living in the fast lane, can't do that. Okay, so I will send to Nicole the MP four and this as a PDF. Okay, so anybody can look in and see all of these resources that they offered. And then the contacts too, like people to connect with, um, if we decide to look into it.
Are there any other upcoming events or?
Let's see, okay, hold on. Upcoming clean energy and climate implementation office hours. So it's just office hours, like June ninth, June eleventh, if we wanted, yeah. So this will be in the document.
We would have to generate questions to do that.
Yeah, but that's a really, that's a good, um, that's a good question, to at least be aware of that, if anybody looks at this and gets really excited.
Yeah, well, if we find a grant that actually, you know, because the HVAC has, we had to take that off as capital for Berlin, so if there's a grant there. That maybe that could save a significant funds. Cool, I'm sure that was good. Alright, and so there's, there's, uh, you said that there was a recording of it too?
Yes, MP four, so that will go in the drive.
So it was just auto?
I mean, it said MP four.
I don't know. Maybe I'm thinking MP three and that's on the audio and MP four is video. Dating myself here. Yes, cause an MP three player, so I bet you that's it. The four is the video.
Yeah, alright, yeah, no, this is definitely video and audio. Hey, if you're dating yourself, then you basically just made me a fossil. So. Yes, there's that, and then what's, what's next?
Also on the agenda is the new website, um, then the handbook formatting that you had done. And then cell phone lunch data, uh, depression prevention.
Do you wanna look at the, um, do you wanna just kind of like flip through the? The um, handbook? Alright, so you've seen the other one, right, you reviewed it. And you know that there's all kinds of weird formatting errors.
Because switching back from.
Switching back and forth between the different programs and people's different versions of the programs on different computers over the years. You know, but also, it, it wasn't just that. When I was trying to read through it, I'm like, what are they even talking about? Like there, they mentioned something here, and then, you know, ten page later, like that gets brought up again. And so it, it really like meandered and it was repetitive and sometimes a little contradictory even, so. Yeah, people, like, nobody was like redoing the whole thing. It was just a bunch of different people adding different things, right? So. I tried to bring it all together. I did my very best, and obviously this will need to be carefully reviewed by everybody, including especially Lisa. You know, but so, I just put like whatever, this, this seems to always be upfront. The disclaimer and the non discrimination and the translations, right? And then we have a table of contents, you know, that, that works. And um, and just so you know. Once I get my final questions answered with this, I'm gonna, you know, re-update that. And then there might be like some hanging things that you'll see, that I'm gonna fix all that before we make our final copy. You know, like, and for instance, like here, there, it'll be table of contents, you know, at the top also, but you know, I don't need to like redo that for, you know, for this. So this is kind of just checking to make sure it works. Alright, and so then the first thing, you know, we come with the welcome letter, I thought that made sense. And then contact, like that's the second thing probably that people really wanna look at. And I just had a couple questions because this was in a couple places. And it had different things, so I, I highlight, I just have highlighted some things, you know, like questions here.
I'm hoping they move to a, an app, because at the elementary schools, they have dismissal app, and you don't have to call anyone. You can just register that they will be absent for whatever reason, sick or. Yeah.
That's great.
Which I think would be amazing for everyone involved.
That would be amazing, yeah. Alright, and then, and so as you can see, I have little questions. And then they have this assistance directory, so if you have any problems, you know, you know who to contact. And then, I thought after that, cause those are like very basic, you know, like kind of welcome, and here's who to contact for whatever you need and how. And then the guiding principles, right? And there was like, oh, and they were like scattered throughout, it was kind of funny. But yeah, so our statement of purpose, mission statement, you know, and I just tried to make all the formatting the same. And um, and this definitely looked real weird on the original one, but like I hope that that looks a little more digestible and neat. I didn't change, you know.
The content.
Yeah, the content. And then we've got the performance objectives, and we don't have to go through like all of this, but, but also, I kind of. So in the previous one, it was, like, all the topics was just alphabetical. You know, so if you were looking for something for locker, you know, like, I don't, it was just. It wasn't grouped by subject, so I did use the Shrewsbury one, the online Shrewsbury one as a model. Because Lisa told me that they did a really great job, and um, you know, they have like people dedicated to doing that, like that get paid, you know what I mean? And so I try, and I thought they did a really good job, so I tried to model, at least in terms of the group, you know, the groupings. So we have like general information, and I don't know, that just seems weird to start with that, but it's alphabetical within each category, you know what I mean? But then we've got like bell schedule, you know, bus, and you know, calendar, class dues, lockers. And see, that's like the kind of thing that I'll move down to the next page, so it'll be together. You know, parking. And then there's like, right, senior privilege. And some of it seems kind of random, but if we think of a better place to put it. I'm very, very happy to move anything, you know, so, and then we have the academics, you know? And like I said, like this was all just kind of like scattered within the whole thing, but now it's all together. So we have, you know, the description of our academics and, you know, just other things related to all of that. Getting help, home, like homework and the purpose of it and, um. Honor roll, what that means, makeup work, you know, these honor societies. How to get promoted to the next grade. And I have some questions, and then there were, like, you know, obviously the website. These were, I think, the old website. So we're gonna have to update that.
Yeah, the um, technology use link, I think was not correct in the, in the BES. Thing that was sent out, so that's something, like I had to go through the website and find it to actually read it.
Okay, and so anyway, this is all, personally, I think that the student performance objectives might be repetitive. With the student learning expectations, but Lisa was like unsure when I asked her, so I thought I'd leave it in, and then we can review it and, and see. So we have summer school, and then um, attendance is like a whole topic in and of itself, cause it's so important. It's got the app, types of absences and, and this is all like just, you know, directly from them, but formatting, so it's neat. Oh, and then whenever possible, I put reference, you know, with a law or the school committee policy or whatever with the hyperlink. And then lots of stuff about that, co-curricular stuff, athletics, dance. You know, eligibility to participate, field trips. Yeah, and then a couple questions there, but. Anyway, and student services is another big one. Oh, and the code of conduct's a big one. So you can see, you know, just all these regular. Hazing. Law enforcement coming into the schools. In some cases, I had to bring in the most up to date school committee policy, and like make it work with that. Public displays of affection, that was in there.
Sure. Gotta spell it out.
Yeah, um, let's see. So there's all kinds of details about suspensions and hearings and, you know, all of that kind of stuff, which. I mean, I think it'll be nicer when this is just all online instead of like printing out this whole thing.
I don't think they print it anymore, I think it's just a link.
Oh, really?
I know, yeah.
Oh, well, that'll be great.
Go find, go find it on the website. And then sign here that, that you read it.
That's what they do with um, with the Shrewsbury, I mean, at least it's online, super easy, you know, with little dropdown things. And Nicole and Carol, last time I was here, we talked about that, and, and I think they wanna do it. But now it's like at least grouped and it would be easy, I think, to just chunk it in there. Alright, well, that's wonderful to hear. And it would be much easier to update, we wouldn't have all the forwarding, formatting issues either. So, alright, and then we have our appendix, and I definitely have to add one more thing here, but um. I'm not exactly sure why some of these things are in the appendix and not just in the main body, but it seemed consistent with Shrewsbury. You know, so we've got the acceptable use policy.
Cause that's what we have to read and sign off.
Yeah, yeah, and then we have the agreement of understanding.
Ah, okay.
So, I tried to make that look better also, it was kind of.
It was.
Hokey.
It was, I agree.
Yeah, and then we've got harassment. And then what happens if harassment happens, and then bullying and cyberbullying, with some questions I had. Let's see, yeah, and that's really long. And then I made that form look a lot better too.
I wonder, is, there's probably some magical way, but like if you click, like within your table of contents to click, say you pick like page eleven. Then it, and then it, it automatically brings page eleven up once it's a PDF.
Yeah, with the, with the table of contents, yeah, for sure.
Okay, cause I, for like the beginning of the year, you have to sign off the technology used, and then there's one other, oh, that you read the handbook. It'd be nice to, that you could just drop down, you know.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Somehow go right to that section.
There will be hyperlinks in there, in the, in the table of contents. I did, I liked the way this came out.
It does look very nice, very pleasing to the eye, which I know took a lot of time, so thank you.
But I, but I had fun with that, I'm like kind of a weird geek in that way.
That's awesome. Takes all types of people in the world around.
Then we've got the parent groups, you know, which, which is nice. But then, this is the part that I'm like, ah, like I don't feel like great about, but the athletic handbook is part of the student handbook. And, and I didn't do anything with this because I didn't like have his permission to do it. You know, and so like, I don't know, I have to talk to her about that, but this is not gonna take long if she wants me to do something with this. Yeah, and then it's just long, you know, but, but it would, it still wouldn't take long, cause it didn't have as much complicated formatting stuff as the other stuff. So.
Cause I think they have to sign that off too in the beginning of the year, like all the athletes.
Yeah, yeah, here it is, yeah. Oh, right, right, right. I, I was just thinking here. Making it like must be signed by the second week of school, you know, cause then, because it seems like this has to then, somebody has to go in there and update it every time. And then that just increases the chance of there being.
Maybe the second Friday of the school or year or something like that, yeah.
So, yeah, so I didn't, I didn't like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Everything else looked beautiful.
Yeah, so that's where I'm at, and so now I just have to reach out to Lisa. And maybe sit down with her and just go over these final questions, like we emailed back and forth a few times, but, um. And then if it's good, then everybody can maybe review it over the summer, and um. And I can, if she likes the way I've done things, maybe I can just start on some other ones too.
I'm sure we'd all love that.
I, I like it. I don't know why I like it.
That's great. Well, it's very satisfying when you're done. I'd wanna throw my computer out the window, so thank you. Wonderful, okay.
Yeah, so that is, that's where I'm at with that. And then also figuring out, if we're just gonna have it online. Then we don't have to figure out this whole formatting thing. Is it gonna be in Word? Is it gonna be on Google? You know what I'm saying? And that would be amazing, and it would be much easier to update.
But it would, would it still have to be printable, I guess, right, like? Because like the, the signing off things are within the document, right? Well, how, how did Shrewsbury do it? Is it purely just a website?
Actually, I'll take a peek, um. I mean, there could just be like a section that says forms, you know what I mean? Where you go and you say, okay, by signing this form, I acknowledge, I read, understand.
I mean, I think, I, I think that would be a wise thing to do, the things that have to be signed off to make them easy to find, like MIAA. And then also like the technology use.
And the bullying, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know which ones would. Sports, and then the technology use. I feel like you also had to sign off that you read the actual.
Like the whole book?
The whole book, yeah.
I do remember that.
I feel like not everyone does.
But, so, but you see how nice this is, look at it. See that? Love it, love it. And um, and I could just see there being like either appendix or forms, you know? And it could be required to sign and.
Excuse me.
I don't know, but that wasn't a sneeze, was it?
Thank you, I will take less. The pollen outside is crazy, there's like yellow clouds coming off pine trees, crazy. Windshield dirty? No, there's just a yellow cloud coming towards me.
Right, it's crazy. So, um, anyway, yeah, so if we could do this, like, maybe that'll be.
I mean, that's gorgeous, yeah.
And our next. Meeting on it, let me see, like it doesn't seem like they have. Yeah, no, that's.
Paper version.
I mean, printing that, I mean, it just like.
I feel, they, they use to send it home, but I don't think, so it probably exists within each of the offices for reference, but I don't. It doesn't come home in its entirety, only the sheets to sign off for, that you looked at it and that you read the technology policy.
That's good.
And I guess next year I'll see the sports.
Yeah, so.
I mean, that's, that's very, that's very cool. Maybe, maybe the beginning of the year next year, we can, you can show us Shrewsbury's and we can, you know.
Yeah, or maybe, or maybe even, I mean, I feel like I'll probably talk to Lisa about this like soon. I didn't, I knew like it was kind of crazy with the end of the year stuff, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just in terms of like bringing it up to the, the whole committee.
Yeah, right, cause the committee would have to approve that, right? Whether to put it online or not?
I don't know. Cause policy versus protocol. We'd have to officially vote on it. Cause the website was really created by the schools, not by us. Look at it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, obviously, everybody should look at it, you know, like, just, I mean, cause we have to approve the handbook.
Right, yes.
Itself.
Ah, yes, so, so yes, yes, yes.
So I guess the mode of presentation would have to also be approved, most likely, I guess. Yeah, cause I remember, I'm like, I have to sign off on this, I'm like.
It's a pain, painful document to peruse through.
This is like, we're, this is like student, I mean, students and their parents see this stuff. And, and we're saying in this document, like, you know, students should be able to express themselves, yeah, professionally, blah, blah. And express their, in writing, and if we can't do it, then I think any parent looking at that is gonna get a bad feeling. So even though there's good reasons for why it turned out the way it did, I, I think it's worth doing this for that reason. Or not only for that reason, but.
No, I mean, I mean, cause that, that presentation is much easier to locate things and. And if you'd had links to sign things off easily, you know, I think ideally they wanted to move to electronically signing off, so if there was like a place. So if there was like a place that you could enter student's name and electronic signature, you know, whatever parent. That would make life a lot easier too, instead of collecting papers.
Yeah, I know.
Or printing papers.
Right, exactly. So, okay.
Cool, thank you.
Are we gonna discuss this at the next meeting or?
It's not on the agenda, um. I mean, I think under our report. Like um like chair subcommittee reports at the very beginning, we can briefly mention it. I'm not sure what else is on the agenda. I mean, we could ask Megan if we could just very briefly show shoesberry site. Which would then actually tie into the the website review too. Um, so I mean, so we could just go into the website review and and.
So looking at the Tohato website?
The district website, so the new website that was launched recently.
Okay.
Um, I have not looked, so this isn't my first look, so.
Cause yours your screen looks a little like dark to me, cause of the angle, I think so. And this isn't like officially finished, right?
I think it's in progress, but it was launched. So kind of my thought, you know, like I said, Paul mentioned that he and Nicole were gonna be looking at it over the summer to. Um, continue working on it. But given the current budget. Situation, so so down here, so if you scroll down, there's questions about FY twenty five budget. Which is and budget information, so that seems newer. Report cards, Desi, okay. So that's kind of a nice function, so that's all the way at the end. So you have the website.
Wait, what did you just click on?
Um, the questions about FY twenty five budget and that little thing pops up. And special town meeting.
This is a little weird right here. Look at.
The author.
Well, it says the author and then the time he posted it, which makes it kinda confusing, I think, like, okay. You know what I mean, the town meeting, like it should say like maybe at the bottom. Blah, 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 on this date or something.
On behalf of.
I mean, is this the kind of stuff that we should be looking at right now or?
Well, that was my thought that evolved. Originally, it was just like, take a look and see what's because of the issues, people like, we can't find information, so like. To to physically take a look and play, well, is this true, like, do we do we need to to do that, so I think. Yeah, I I would think that would be within within that agenda item.
So you want me to make a note about that then?
I mean, the thing that maybe see, so that the news and announcements. Is at the bottom of the page, so if you first look, like if you go to the district website. You have to scroll down to see that.
Right.
So I don't know if there's could be some. Some button up here next to our district or like district news or something that would then bump you down to. News and announcements. So that would be a tab, right?
Is this using some kind of um a program like made for school districts, do you know?
I'm thinking so, I don't know, I don't.
I'm gonna use the search budget.
Such an ugly search, I don't know. All minutes, oh. So and then under that section. And date posted, posted.
If necessary, like I don't even think it's really necessary to like, that's not gonna really help anybody, I don't think. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I I could understand the date that it was posted to see if like.
Or like if it's the most up to date. Alright, well, then at least make it clear. Call to action button.
Is it, oh.
Yeah, it's like, it's, I guess it's just like, it's part of the template, yeah. Beautiful calendar.
Our school committee handbook needs to be updated.
I'll do that.
I don't even think your name's on it and Mike is still a chair, I think, so.
Wait, this is what I got when I clicked school committee?
Oh, Keith Lewis is on there, yeah, it's wailed.
Wait, should like, should this be, when you go to school committee? This is what what you get, like there's nothing there, except for.
Huh, it doesn't go to the home, would it click on? So that link should not, so what did you, so that. Right?
Hold on.
Was it that you just clicked on?
Yeah, I think that's what I did.
Oh, so we should so re, so tab of school committee. Needs to go to the home.
Otherwise, there's just like nothing there.
Yeah, like there's nothing here. Because when I clicked from. This budget information tab at the bottom and then clicked here. Wonder if this could be condensed, so you can then see that.
You wanna eat something, there's something else weird. They used to have like our pictures and stuff. In like a little bio, remember?
Yeah, meet the members. I think meet the members is. Yeah. Although, oh, you're, oh, that's weird.
My, they put Mike in a little circle. With a red line.
I wonder if that's the picture he submitted.
That's a nice family picture you have. Is that like it of?
So I was thinking. If we can do this into two columns. And then that would allow you to see this underneath it.
Yep. That's a great idea. See, you know, cause otherwise there's just all this. Useless space, yeah. But you know what else is kinda weird, like under our names, so it says that the overall title is school committee mem- or members, right? And then right under that is BES facilities report, Tohato cell survey report, like. That shouldn't be there, right?
I guess maybe they couldn't find another place to put it.
Well, I don't know, it could be like surveys and reports or, you know, something like that.
At the bottom.
Yeah. School committee meeting videos.
That's cool, cause that was hard to find. It was unclear that there was two different locations of things.
Yep.
Oh, so they do have the public budget hearing recording, okay. So maybe if we can add. That's something I can do. Add in the three year plan.
And then, I mean, I don't know if we wanna give this level of pickiness, but like you see how. The sections are broken up by a long line. This line was. Broken into two because of this image, I think, the placement of it probably. So the line continued underneath and that's just like not.
If you maximize your window, what does it do?
Is yours, yeah, you have the two lines too, right? So I I don't know, I mean, do we wanna be that annoying?
Probably not at this point in time, but I I think I think we need to do a a further dive too.
Okay.
And then we could always give feedback to Paul too. And Nicole, I guess, if there's something we find.
Should, maybe that could be something that we ask in the meeting, like what what's the process, like and do you want us to do this, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I know, well, I'm thinking like, cause you know, people say, oh, there's it's hard to find stuff, you know, so. Just Joe Schmo, which I feel like with internet stuff, I'm Joe Schmo, but you know, like. Clicking clicking through and seeing what what would allow us to. Communicate better.
So is pupil personnel services for special education or?
It includes that.
Okay. It improve the performance. Students, oh, and English language learners, okay. Got some awards, it looks like.
I think those are the trophies, so maybe they're.
Oh, that's a sport. I don't even recognize it. Power teacher. Is that like power school?
Oh, power school, yeah, yeah, for all the grades and stuff.
Might be cool to, um. I'm just like talking out loud, we don't have to like do anything about it, but like on the food services. Like it might be nice, like, hey, you know, we contract our food services with this organization and here you can submit feedback and, you know. I don't know, something like that.
That is something actually I've asked about. Um, yeah, cause we don't have who it's with Whitsons, right?
Yeah, and like there there's like no description, all they all we have is like an application for, looks like, I don't know. Maybe free meals or whatever, but.
Or just the form, yeah. Cause they have a website that has a lot of different, you know, they were showing us their blurbs and there was a lot of nice. Looking stuff that they had for information about the quality of their food and stuff, so.
It would be really nice to highlight that.
Circling my act- action items.
I love it, this looks like like, you know, the background looks like a school picture. Yeah, so I'm I'm thinking also like with the health services, like there could even be like information about. You know, from the student handbook about the screenings and the this and, you know, there's like a lot in there that could potentially. Oh, no, cause that's like the Tohato handbook.
I don't know, I like the health policy.
Yeah.
Again, I think I think, you know, it's a newer website. It's still being built, so I think. Maybe revisiting this as well. You know, if we poke around ourselves and see if there's, you know, the little things that could make big change, you know, like make big impact.
Not just like every, like not like little nitpicky things, okay.
But like, you know, when you click on school committee, where does it go? You know, I think that's big. Just from a user standpoint.
Yeah, and so, okay, then, so here's another example of that then, that kinda thing. So when you click on student services. That's kinda weird. It's just the pupil personnel services, right? So this would be for the English language learners and special education, right? But student services, like I in the in the handbook, you know, at least it's like more like cafeteria and counseling and. You know what I mean, like all that kinda stuff too. And so if you were looking for counseling, how do I get my child counseling?
I guess when you click on this, though, it presents all these, right?
I don't know, because this is also highlighted, this is administration and this looks like administration, um, sub, sub. What do you call it?
Yeah, subcategory or.
Yeah. Let me see if I click on directory. What if I just click off of it? Oh, I see.
So it did disappear?
I think, I think what happens is the last thing that you were on, like so, alright, let's just say I'm on. Administration right now. But if I wanna click on student services. The sub, the sub, whatever it is, yeah, stays for the previous.
But it doesn't though, because I clicked on s- school committee and that populates that.
Wait, 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 let me look at yours though, cause I can't really see. Alright, you just clicked on school committee, you said. Alright, but yeah, before you click anything, just look at this. We've got administration and the sub, it's the menu, the sub menu for administration, but you had school committee clicked on and then the.
It does change here, though. But for some reason, student services has the same menu, which would, which does reflect. Some of what you would think under there. So I think it has the same. Because community organization goes to town of Roundtown, Wailston. Admin does that. District or something else, yeah. So then all those are, I guess, are relevant to.
Okay, alright, so.
But I would think sports would be.
So then me, so but I guess maybe we're. So then me, so but I guess maybe what confused me is we click on student services and then director. Personnel services. You know, comes here as the default and then that's highlighted there, I guess, right, so. But shouldn't there be like an overall thing, like student services encompasses blah blah blah, or you know what I mean?
Well, I would think. Yeah, or I wouldn't imagine her being the default. I I would imagine like district health services or something maybe being the default if there wasn't like a. Broader page.
Or it or it could just be like a broader page saying, you know, we offer, you know, our school district offers a variety of student services, you know, for. This and that and, you know, and here's the links or something along those lines, like at least something like, so it's the. I think that that might be like a common theme, then what we're seeing is like the home page for a particular topic is not.
Not yet formed, yeah. So homepages, development of homepages.
Yeah. Cause I saw something else like that too. Okay, like for instance, maybe they're they're probably already aware of this, like if you click on community organizations, you know, we have those two.
Not there.
Yeah, there's nothing here.
Should be there too.
Um, but you know what else? This is kinda weird. Maybe it's not weird.
But you would think those hyperlinks would be on that page as well.
Yeah, but I guess they, I guess they are right here at the top, but it looks like a. Sub menu.
But they're not like, if you don't highlight them, they just look like tabs.
Yeah.
Are all of them? Oh, interesting, all of them are like that. But they're not like, they don't look like buttons.
Yeah, so if you click on it, the sub menu shows in gray here.
They don't.
That's what it is, yeah. But it's like, why, I guess this is what's confusing me is like. When you hover over it, you get the nice regular thing that you would expect, like the green dropdown, right? So you can click on those things as a sub menu item, but if you click on it, all those things go here? Maybe, I don't know, maybe it makes sense.
But if you don't drag, I mean, that one's a little more obvious that there there are things that you can click on, but they're not buttons, like it doesn't look like tabs or.
Yeah, so it just repeats that dropdown there. And it just like looks a little.
Well, like you know how like on on file folders, you have, you know, those those tabs on file folders? Like you could do it like that, or you just like radio buttons, like this is obviously something that you can click on.
Yeah. Right. And they may not even have, um. The ability to do that, like if this is a template.
Template, yeah. Alright, wonder, yeah. There's no, no place for like web website feedback or something, or I haven't tried websites usually have that.
Look, it it has, so it has in most cases, the um, the menu items down the left here, right? So like this is our district and that is the same menu items is what's on the top. Yeah, so it kinda seems like maybe they just shouldn't do that and should just always do this. Cause that's like people understand that, like that's more intuitive, I think. And then it's kinda weird too, like, oh, I guess maybe it makes sense. Yeah, it's like they have two sub menus on every ti- every time you click on a on a topic. It's at the top and down the side. That's that's what the problem is.
Maybe for a community organization, if they just hadn't gotten to making the side ones. Although with only two, you could probably make two icons, like, you know, the Duke town and one.
Yeah, for that, right? But you see like superintendent's corner, superintendent's corner, you know, I don't know.
Yeah. Tohoto's a little bit more. More pleasing to the eye than the old one. Yeah, so look, uh, so B E S, if you click into it, like for our school, then community organizations, it's just this weird. There's no side menu, so it looks like there's nothing on here unless you know to look up here as well.
Yeah, it seems like it should be consistent, you know, like either the side one or the across the top one.
Yeah. What's P B I S? Like student service at B E S, there's only the school nurse on there. Which you would think there should be like the special education. And then also the counselors. O T P T.
What do you think of that purple color?
It's blue on my computer, I don't know.
Oh, yeah? Looks purple to me, that's so funny.
Do you maybe have the blue filter on?
Well, it looks purple on your computer to me also.
Oh, they look different to me.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, a little.
More bluish.
Yeah, I do have the blue filter on, so maybe that's why.
Yeah. Alright, and then.
So then, I mean, should we ask him then in the meeting if he wants? Any and all feedback or just like on specific things or?
Yeah, maybe on the way out, and that way for the the, um. Summary, whatever the, you know, the subcommittee summary at the beginning of the meeting, we can say what what and if is preferred. For for website feedback.
Okay. That would be good. They might wanna make like a like a Google document or a Google spreadsheet or something, you know.
Like a simple survey or feedback?
Or even if we just go to it, like if everybody's looking at it, we can like put it in there and it can be trackable and. Not get lost in like a, you know, a bunch of different emails or, you know, but that's if he wants that kind of, you know.
Yeah.
Or if he's like, not yet, you know, like.
Right, yes, yeah, finish the school year.
Yeah, yeah. So, or you know, finish what whatever their plan is, I have no idea like what they're like.
Yeah, cause it could be mid mid publishing, so.
Yeah, okay. So.
Alright, and so the the next topic, the cell phones at lunch and the data regarding depression, this is not. Supposed to be a comprehensive discussion at all, um, it's kind of reopening the topic. Um, I know there was that survey that was done, um, with the students and the te- and the staff, the anonymous survey. And it kind of brought back mixed data even from the staff, which I thought was interesting. But I think they're. You know, they're, the attorney general has made a, um, let me get back in here, um. The attorney general did some. Alert, maybe, issued an advisory, um. With social media and youth, um, and so there's a lot of data there. And then, um, I know Julie Lee has have has a lot of data on. Mental health, the trends, even before the pandemic and now afterwards too. And I was hoping that maybe we could set up a meeting with the the counselors in each of the schools too. Um, maybe via Zoom, but just to get their input. And the school nurses too, maybe to get the input of what they're seeing on the ground, like these, you know, national surveys and worldwide surveys are good. And it gives us a lot of data and and, you know, the American, um, academy of pediatricians. Has recommendations on screen time and and devices and social media. Um, but in terms of what's being seen within our schools as well, um, cause there's definitely a lot of. Different avenues that one could pursue in terms of the bags, the bags that get locked, so you could still have your phone on it and. You could rip it open if it's a true emergency, um. Or some people, some campuses have no cell phones come out of the lockers at all, and so it's not on you in class, so it's not a buzzing distraction. During class, um. And it sounds like any policy that we might think about down the line for the sub, you know, the subcommittee policy committee. To look at, I think it would have to apply to the elementary schools as well as the the middle and high school. Um, because there are definitely kids with smartphones and smartwatches and so that is becoming more of an issue. Um, you know, this was on the agenda before, um, but in the B E S principals newsletter, weekly newsletter. There was a reminder of how they're not allowed and that they're becoming more of a distraction at the elementary school of Boylston at least. Um, and a parent, um, had emailed us about how. That was very surprising that this was an issue and that policies need to be updated, which they do. So, and I know a lot of parents have safety concerns about their kids not having phones in case of emergency. So keeping them in lockers would not address that concern, but keeping them in a locked bag in your backpack. Would, I guess. Um, I don't know if backpacks are allowed in classrooms at Tohoto, that's the only thing.
Oh, really?
I don't know. I know some schools have a no backpack policy.
Really?
But I don't know if we do.
I didn't know that.
Which is something we should.
Is that for like safety or?
Yeah, that you can't hide anything in your backpack.
Hmm, wow. I was, um, I saw outside of a Worcester school, the kids were coming out at the end of the day and they had clear bags. All of the bags were clear.
Some of them do that route too, yeah, yeah. Yeah, cause I mean, you know, if your classes are. You know, opposite ends and you so you have to carry multiple classes, that's a lot to just be carrying.
Right.
And dropping.
Right, and if you want pen, highlighter, like, I don't know.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So. Yeah, I mean, personally, I think that the data is very clear that this stuff is not good for kids.
Yeah, or adults.
Right, or adults, like none of us, and it's addictive and it and it tends to really impact mental health and it's so distracting. I think it's giving everybody A D D, like the kids and the adults, like everybody's like, you know, like checking, checking, checking all the time.
All that constant buzz, right, and that's why like I don't wear a smartwatch, because I can't deal with it, you know, especially if I'm seeing patients or something, I don't. I don't wanna be rude and being distracted from what the patient's saying, which is applicable to schools and teaching and.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that, um, it would be a really great thing to. Figure that out so that the kids aren't in school with their phones. Now, it might be a really cool thing for the, like a school committee or school wide. Educational forum, you know, for, hey, here's the data, you know, this is what these phones are doing to your kids and. You know, maybe you wanna consider just giving them a flip phone, they can call you on a flip phone, they can text you on a flip phone, but it's not gonna have all those. Five hundred other distractions, right? Oh, somebody posted a picture of me, you know?
Well, yeah, and there's, I mean, there's other options too, like so there's the the flip phones and then I know there's like the Bark phone, um. Which is a specific phone, so it's not like an Apple or a Droid phone, um, but it has things that will scan. The different apps for red flags, so like suicide, idilation or bullying or sexual pred- you know. Um, issues there. And then it's also an app that can be on iPhones, but not Droids, um, which is interesting. Um, and then there's the the whole push to wait until eighth, um, for smartphones. I think I think the forum would be really awesome.
It would, and we could record it, we could even put it on the district website, like under health or mental health or, you know. Or and have a link to it under a phone policy and, you know, here's why, and I really do think that. Probably most parents, like if they realized what the data is, that they would be for it.
Well, and it's it's interesting because, you know, in terms of the portrait of a graduate, when you leave, like. I ha- I see staff, you know, I wander around work and they're constantly on their phones and they're not being professional and. They're not getting their work done. So I think there's a a part of that too, realizing the the addiction.
I remember once, um, I had to give my son a consequence for something, he was like in, I don't even know, but he was young, but he had a phone. He was old enough to have a phone, but so I took it away for a day and he lost his mind. Cause I think that they're using it, it's almost like an OCD thing, like to escape.
Two seconds bored, yeah.
You know, something that you don't wanna, whatever, so you just look at that, cause there's a million distractions, it it's just really not good.
Which then coping mechanisms go down, yeah.
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 Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so I think, you know, and then also looking to see. If M, um. Oh, my gosh, who gives us our policies?
Oh, mask?
Yeah, yeah, M A S C, yeah, um, if their policy has been updated recently or. Or if there's a discussion at the state level to see what it is.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Certainly like, you know, the federal surgeon general, um.
Yeah. And, um, the superintendent, I think, of Mount Greylock, like that school district, he was originally against. Um, any kind of limits on the phone or, you know, maybe not having phones in the school. And now he has totally changed his mind, he's like, no, we're not gonna have the phones anymore.
So Julie forwarded me some data that she has collected, um, so I can put that in our drive. Um, and then also the link, um, that actually, uh, John Campbell had forwarded me from the surgeon general. But, yeah, just to kind of open up the conversation and revisit it, cause I think it's much, much needed. You know, and then also it would be interesting to get the data from the, um. The, um, the counselors in school too, in terms of what percentage of students are on their radar, you know? Or how many visits per day or something, you know, just to see how. You know, or how many visits per day or something, you know, just to see how. How real the issues are within our school district. In terms of the depression anxiety, I don't know if they do like a state, a a school-wide survey for depression or not.
Right. However, even if it's not out of control, which I think it is, I think for whatever reason, I'm under the impression that it they're on, they have a heavy load. Like they can't keep up with it, I mean, that's why. But even if it wasn't out of control, it's still, I think that this limiting the cell phones in some way would be prophylactic.
Yes, well, I mean, the the data seems very overwhelming to support them, so, yeah, yeah. The other thing, um, that I was thinking too, like. We know that exercise and fresh air and exposure to nature also is very beneficial for mental health. And there's a lot of data surrounding that with like the Japanese, um, forest bathing.
I love that.
Yes, yes, me too, um. But, you know, there's no playground per se for the high school or the middle school. And so I was actually, there was, I saw recently that they set up one of, one school, I'll have to look it up again. But they did kind of like this ninja warrior obstacle course, so even the kids had like, you know, a five-minute movement break. A bunch of them could go through this obstacle course and get a little extra energy. You know, and then also for the kids like on I E Ps that need movement breaks, that would be a good little thing too. That was something that maybe we could look to see if there's grants to do or if the high school would, you know, if that's something they would be interested in.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, you you never get too old for swings.
Well, the the one I saw, it was like, you know, monkey bars and then hopping and then, you know, it was. Um, but something a kid could do pretty quickly, so, and not take up too much room.
Yeah, right, the swings probably would. I don't know if we have space for that, but yeah, that would be very, very cool. And there is one other issue with the phones that I just wanted to bring up for the record. Is, um, you know how I'm big on this whole E M F topic, right? And, um. It is. Mind-boggling when you think about it, right? We've got cell phone signal coming in, we've got a powerful Wi-Fi signal. Our, both of our computers are giving off signals, both of our phones are giving off signals. Um, that TV, that's probably giving off a signal, you know, maybe even the printer, you know what I'm saying? We are bombarded, and then if you get into a room of people, twenty people with cell phones, all of those are giving off signals. It is unnatural, it is not good, it causes oxidative stress, opens up the blood-brain barrier. And, um, they they have found that it's even increases risk of cancer, all of this E M F. It's man-made frequencies and, um, there's a lot there, and I think I'm, I sent it to you at some point or shared it somehow. Yeah, there's like some really good websites, you know, specifically to make schools less, you know, signal intensive.
With that data, was it within the lockers? Like, I wonder like if it's inside metal lockers of that.
I think the locker, I think the metal locker would contain it, cuz it's kind of like, like they say, like it's like a Faraday cage. It's just bouncing around in there, you know, but, um, I mean, really, they should. Like if they're gonna put something in there, like just so they don't kill their own battery, you know, or whatever, like put it on sleep or put it on, you know, turn it off.
Yeah, I wonder if the bags, cuz I'm not familiar with the bags, Julie might know, but I'm, like if if. Their signal containing or if it's just a plastic bag or.
I think it does contain the signal. I think. Maybe there's different ones. Yeah. So that is something that we should, I think, talk about. I still would love to have C C Doucette come and talk to us, but. I get the sense that it's like such a big topic that everybody's a little bit afraid. But if there's like really simple things we can do that. I mean, this isn't about no technology, it's just about using it in a way that's like safer. Minimizing the risk, um, of the E long-term E M F. And all of the E M F, like we are inundated with it, like people even turn it off at night, you know, the cell phone's right there, they've got their Wi-Fi.
No landline, right?
So there's no rest. And it's not good.
It's all. Alright, so yeah, so I just wanted to kind of reopen that can of worms, um.
It's a great can of worms to open.
Super important for the kids in the house.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, and you know, I'm on the school wellness committee. And we just completed our, well, our updated wellness policy, you know, which the school committee will vote on, you know, review and everything. And, um, that could even be, I mean, we're gonna, we have to keep our school wellness policy, I mean, committee a- active, you know. And we have to update the, um, the policy every three years, but in the interim, you know, like we don't have to update.
I mean, that would be very much the wellness committee.
Yeah, we could do, you know, like coordinate these things like the. Or about the E M Fs if everybody agrees that.
I feel like there's a lot of data there, but you might lose, you might lose people on that one.
I've lost so many people on that one, like even like my friends who trust me as somebody who like looks into things, they're like, I don't care.
Like too big of a topic, right?
They're like, I'm not worried.
Thinking we maybe need to leave the building soon, so. Cuz of the end of the school day, I don't know.
Hopefully Darby's is open.
So, oh, hopefully.
Did you ever get those half moon cookies?
Um, alright, so, uh, May thirty first at three thirty seven. Um, we'll close the subcommittee, um, Student Success and Technology Subcommittee.